And call this me, the Oskaloosa City Council to order. Today is June 20th, 2016. Let's start with the invocation by Pastor Alvin Bolesma. Good news chap.
Our Father in heaven, we come to you tonight to seek your guidance and blessing upon the councilmen and women. We ask that your direction will be given to them in their insight. We thank you also for a discussion we might have openly one with another or in private session. We pray of view of each council member, each department head, and those in charge of making our city what it is and even better. We ask that you hear our prayer and forgive our sins. In Christ's name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Do join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Burnett.
Here.
Caudill.
Here.
Jimenez.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Chris Day.
Here.
Wally.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Okay. Next item up is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. We ask that they keep statements brief. Time is limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council so concerns can be properly researched and answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only, so no asking the police or, excuse me, the fire chief, what the heck was that? Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time?
Hello councilman and mayor. My name is Ross Schultz and the business development director at Haskett Partnership. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the hospital regarding the C Avenue parking. That we are both in full support of the recommendation by the city to have no parking on either side of the street, or the recommendation by planning and zoning committee to have no parking in front of the hospital due to the safety of both our patients and our emergency personnel.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item five is the consent agenda. These are all items that are routine in nature and are going to be acted on presumably in one motion unless something gets pulled off. I did want to draw council's attention to a few items on here. Item J is the appointments to the water board where I have Jason Carter recommended for reappointment and Danny Nance for appointment. Also, item M, which is a resolution approving a contract for transportation with the city of Oskaloosa and 1015 transit. Item O is a resolution scheduling a public hearing for July 18th to consider levying a special assessment against private property for city cleanup at 805 South B Street. And item P, which is a resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on a proposal to enter into a development agreement with Intraco, also known as Cable Bay. So anyway, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if you would forgive me for interrupting you. There is one thing we should note in the minutes, just so this reflects to, as we've discussed, of course, and as the council is aware, obviously, the elevator is not working because everyone's had to walk upstairs today. I have tried to visit with the Public Information Board and ask about that in the Iowa Civil Rights Commission insofar as how to approach that potential ADA issues. I would state and advise the council that I came up here a few minutes ago, at that point in time, there was no one downstairs that indicated they were requiring any type of assistance. I visited with Mark Neff a moment ago and Mark has graciously indicated he would have a firefighter down there to watch the door as well, to let us know if anybody should show up and indicate that they needed any assistance, in which event, we can and we'll go ahead and make provision to get any such folks up here if that need should arise. But I would like the minutes to show and reflect that.
Very good. Thank you very much Dave. Any comments on the consent agenda? Roll call please.
Do we need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I do have a comment, but I think.
Okay, do we have a motion of support for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Now comments.
Regarding item M, which is the transit, 1015 transit, and it states in there we're going to do 10,000, and then it's expected we would raise the other eight. What if we don't raise the other eight? Do we have to put it in, or is the contract not void if it's not raised?
I would say they would terminate service upon reaching that 10,000.
Okay, so we'd spend it first and then it would stop.
But again, that group is working with the community fundraisers, and you have a part of that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't have that right there. I'm sorry.
Any other comments or questions? Now roll call please.
Yates.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes.
Caudill.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Chris Day.
Yes.
Wally.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Into the regular agenda, item 6A is to consider a resolution adopting a proposal for the fiscal year 2017 property liability automobile equipment and workers' compensation insurance. Proposal is for $210,577. We've Margaret Ratcliffe is here from Midwest One Insurance Services with a presentation. Margaret, the floor is yours.
Didn't think I'd have to lower that mic, but I guess I did. My name is Margaret Ratcliffe. I'm with Midwest One Insurance Services here in Oskaloosa. We're an independent insurance agency, and because of that, we serve or we represent many, many companies. And so we have the privilege and the responsibility to check each year with other carriers to see if there are better opportunities for the city's insurance. The last couple of years, we've gone to EMC, they declined a vote because of the problem with the parking lot around the mall. And so this year, we went to ICAP, which is a tool that communities do use. There's three major players in the state of Iowa for municipality insurance. One of them Cincinnati, which is who you have your coverage with, and EOC and ICAP. So Cincinnati is glad to go ahead and provide some of the quote for renewal this year. Like I said, EMC declined. ICAP said that they were quoted that they wanted a $50,000 deductible on general liability because of the potential liability claims. So I visited with the city administration, we decided that that was not a good choice for the city to have to potentially come up with 50,000 for each liability claim. So we're with Cincinnati, they provide us a quote. And what I'd like to do is start with the paper in your packet that says the insurance proposal for city of Oskaloosa. You've seen these in the past, so I won't go through it line by line by line. I might hit the highlights and then see if you have any questions on it. At the top, it starts with the property, and you can see there was a little bit of rate increase there, it's approximately 6%. This covers the blanket coverage for all the buildings and business personal property. We have it written on a blanket basis because then the coverage could be applied to any building that needs it. In case you have a major loss on a couple of large buildings, if the coverage needs to be reallocated, we can do that. We do carry a 90% coverage rate, 90% of replacement cost. So Mike and I review this each year, and we feel that we do have adequate limits of coverage on the building. Couple of years ago, we went through repricing the different deductibles, and we have a $5,000 deductible, which was kind of their sweet spot. It saved us enough premium that it made it worth it. You go to a much larger deductible, it doesn't save you that money. So that's where we're at on the property. The builder's risk policy on the fire station is shown a little bit further down in the proposal, and I separated it out because it's actually written from May of 2016 until September of 2017, which is when the project is supposed to be complete. So it's a fully earned premium, but that's a separate item of the 4515 down below. Okay, then, let's go on. The equipment and computers had just minimal changes, and the rate actually increased just a little bit. On general liability, you can see that went up a little bit. It's based on the net expenditures of the city, which actually increased by 23%, but the premium bumped up only 10%. Your automobile premiums reflect normal updates throughout the year. We listed down on the second page, we deleted two older vehicles, we added four new ones, and one of them was a very nice fire truck. So that did bump up your premium when we've had. The umbrella premium reflects an increase as it's tied directly to the general liability and to the number of autos covered on the underlying policies. We did go ahead and get a quote on increasing the umbrella limit from 4 million to 5 million, just to give you that option. Where we've seen umbrella claims come in is on really bad automobile accidents. If you have a fatality, or if you have someone who's injured, paralyzed, and has to have care for the rest of their life, that's where you see the large settlements. How much is enough? Who knows? But at least you know that, you know, you are carrying the limit right now with the 4 million, Mike had swamped that up here a couple of years ago, but an option to increase it to 5 million would be a fee of 4,000, or an annual premium of 4,862. You know, so that's a lot of money, but that's, at least you guys have an educated decision then, you know what it would cost to increase it.
So Margaret, I'm going to increase it, another $4,000 to go to 5 million?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Because your umbrella premium right now is at 19,448. You know, and there's businesses in town, they have a $10 million liability limit, so on their umbrella. So, you know, it's just, it's where do you want to spend your money, and where do you feel like you might have, you know, some exposure? Well, at least you have that option, you know that you can raise it if you feel like you need to. Like I said, though, in the industry, the automobile claims is where we've seen the umbrellas get kicked in at. So, okay. The next section starts with workers' compensation. And Tom Wally, this one's just for you. Our experience law, it probably went down, which we were expecting that it would. It went down from the 1.13 down to the 0.95. And even though your payroll had an increase of about $40,000, the premium did drop quite substantially. And then in addition to getting the longevity discount of 5%, a large premium discount of 14%, we were also able to finally add back in that 8% good experience credit. So now you folks are at a 27% discount on your workplace time premium. So, good job. And there's been just very few claims since then, and it's there when it's needed, and unfortunately, there can be bad accidents, but they're doing a really good job of managing that. On the second one down below that, the law enforcement liability had a wee bit of an increase, the public officials liability stayed flat, and the employment practices dropped several hundred dollars, and those are all just normal rate fluctuations. Your employment practices policy still includes a lot of extra coverages that formerly could only be purchased as options, and that includes consent to settle, back wages, EEOC complaint handling, and non-monetary defense coverage. This year, there is an option available to include third-party liability on your employment practices policy. This comes into play where an organization with a lot of interaction with the public can be vulnerable in this area. It protects the city and its employees from accusations of wrongful acts committed against customers, clients, vendors, and suppliers. These wrongful acts can include harassment, including sexual harassment, discrimination, humiliation, and invasion of privacy. And that would increase the premium 853 dollars a year. You know, it's one of those things where when I'm aware of a coverage that's been added and it's now available, I just need to let you know and let you know what, you know, a scenario might be for that, where the coverage might kick in. You know, if you have people out working in the public and one of your employees is accused of doing something inappropriate with one of your customers, this will defend them, and the legal costs are outside of the policy limit. So, if something is available, I would recommend it because you do have some of your employees that deal directly with the public, but it's a decision that's obviously left to you guys. So it's available. Then we can also add, consent to settle is not included in the law enforcement or the public officials liability, but we can add that to law enforcement for 1,632 and to public officials for 806. And what that is, is that on these professional liability policies, you can purchase that right consent to settle, and what that means is, if you don't agree with what the adjuster wants to pay in one of those claims, you can say, "No, we're going to take this to trial." But what goes along with that is a 70, they call it a 70-30 soft counter clause, where anything beyond what the insurance agent or the insurance adjuster agreed to settle with, the insurance company will pay 70%, but then the city has to bear 30%. So if you don't agree, and you have, they do this all the time, and they generally know which cases they can defend and win, and which cases they're going to lose. But if you feel very, very strongly that you have a law enforcement liability or a public officials liability claim that you don't want to settle, you can pay extra premium and then you're making yourself a little bit vulnerable then for anything over what they would agree to pay. So it's another one of those things that's out there. Some people want it, some people don't. It's included automatically in the, in the act. Then, last but not least, is terrorism insurance coverage.
I don't get offered that before. Do you have a question, Tom?
I just don't remember getting that offered before. Is that new?
The consent to settle?
Yeah.
No, it was offered last year. Yeah. The premium was a little bit less, but yeah, it was out there. So terrorism insurance coverage is typically not being purchased by the city. Something that I want to make sure that you're aware of is that the initial level, if it's certified as a terrorist activity, it can be kicked in at a level as low as $5 million. Now, when you look at the property of the city palace, and if somebody decided to, if a terrorist decided to blow up the city pavilion, the new fire station, you could get to that $5 million. But here again, the Secretary of the Treasury has to say that it's a certified act of terrorism. And the other thing is too, that Boston Marathon and Orlando have not been certified as terrorist acts. Even though a lot of people get killed, there's not a lot of property damage. So, if you want to purchase terrorism insurance, the premium is $632 in addition to what you're paying. So you have been out of that. So overall, we saw an increase, or I'm sorry, we saw a decrease of 6.14 over this past year thanks to that workman's comp experience mod adjustment. One other small item that I want to add in here is some data compromise coverage. And historically, as I've worked with Mike, you don't have a lot of data that you keep that's private, other than the employees. And so here again, how much premium do you want to pay on insurance for something that has kind of minimal exposure? You can purchase $50,000 worth of data compromise coverage, which would cover about 245 people for notifying them and then giving them one year of free credit protection. That would basically fully cover a chunk of your employees, because your employee data, it would be some private data that you have on hand. That's $125 a year. That's one of those things that's, I'm not here to spend all your money. It may sound like it, truly I'm not. But I do have a responsibility, if I know that there's a coverage available, I need to make it available. So, I also want to note that the city has been very proactive and aggressive in their risk management program, and that's acknowledged by the insurance carriers, and they wanted to make sure that it passed that law. There have been some programs implemented over the last several years that have, have been very, very rock solid. They address any potential loss exposures, whenever you have a claim, it's routed internally, they pull in the police, they pull in the street department, whoever is needed, and they address things right away. And that's noticed and that's appreciated. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them, otherwise I'd also thank you very, very much.
I'm not sure I tracked fully through the last part when we were talking about the consent to settle. Is that included in this or not?
No. You have an option, if you want. It's included in the employment practices, automatically. Okay, the employment practices policy includes consent to settle. The law enforcement professional liability and the public officials consent to settle, that is not included in the premium that's on the plan.
Is that that extra 853 you're talking about?
The $853 is the third-party liability that could be added to the employment practices that would protect you and would defend an employee if they were accused of harassing someone outside of here, a client. So you've got third-party liability on your employee.
That's listed here.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's the one you said you recommended?
I would recommend that, yeah, yeah. And the consent to settle is not listed on there because it's something I just want to inform you about.
Okay, that's where I was, so it's not listed?
That's correct.
Okay, that's where I was. Yeah, I couldn't find it.
Yep, yep, sorry.
Okay. Is that the same about the terror?
The terrorism is, is a separate thing.
But it's not listed either, is it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Those are things that, well, and historically, the city hasn't purchased it, but I just kind of bring it up each year to let you know what it is.
So then, is the third-party coverage, that $853, is that new? Is that what you're saying?
That is new. That was a new offer this year, yes.
Okay.
So in the past, if someone did that, we weren't covered?
You would have had some coverage under what they call personal injury liability on the general liability policy. So there's, there is some coverage out there for that now. This is over and beyond that, so.
Because I was thinking that the umbrella policy would have probably covered that over time.
You, yeah, and so you do have, you would have the 500,000 under your regular general liability, and the umbrella would come over that, and this would be the 2 million on top of it. So, you know, you've got some underlying coverages there that we need to be exhausted first.
This is right here, does not include that, so.
I'm looking at the additional insureds, and I was thinking about the Oskaloosa Airport Commission. Do they have a separate policy away from the city of Oskaloosa?
No, they are listed on yours as an additional insured because they are just listed as an entity.
Um.
They have a separate, let me see. Okay, what are you saying? You're asking if they should be on there or?
Right. But I'm looking on the last page of our packet.
Yeah, the city of Oskaloosa, the airport insurance is under the name of city of Oskaloosa.
Oh, okay.
So you don't have to be listed, they don't have to be listed as an additional insured.
Okay, okay. And then I see we've also got the Oskaloosa Municipal Water Department as an additional insured. I believe on their policy, they list the city of Oskaloosa. Are there any economies of scale that could be gained by saying, "Okay, we're just going to have all of this done under a single package, where we pick up both the water department and the city of Oskaloosa as one collapsed package"?
Theoretically, yes. I would, I mean, I think we would need to just take a more close look at it, but you're still going to base it on things like payrolls and sales and, and we would have to look at it. There could potentially be some, but you still have the property, you know, property's going to be X amount of dollars, whether it's insured under one name or another. As far as the premium for adding additional insureds, that's pretty minimal, about $35.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. Just curious.
Okay. Any, any?
Anybody got any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Margaret.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Do we need to do a vote to go ahead and adopt this insurance package?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Salute.
Okay, can you just further discussion?
So the staff recommendation is not to include that $853. That's correct. The way I understood it, that's what it was.
I would, I would say it's something that should be considered. We didn't have a tremendous amount of discussion about that as a condition. We do, like Margaret mentioned, we do have underlying coverage that would be exhausted first. I'm trying to think of an event that would be an exhaust that first, and it would be even far between, now that I said that, right? So I think it's something that we should continue to look at, but I don't know that it has to be adopted right now.
Okay.
I don't feel strongly one way or the other, because I'm surprised about that, which I know it doesn't help you.
How about the increase of the well?
I think we're good for where we're at. Yeah, and I think that's something that we should talk about early next spring, when this, when we look at it.
Maybe that'd be a good time to explore that third-party.
Yes.
Coverage as well, so we just won't jump in and spend the money until we've got a good review.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I can't speak to any analysis that I've done on that. Obviously, the insurance company has had some actuarial look at it, but I don't know what that looks like.
Okay. Any further comments? Roll call please.
Burnett.
Yes.
Caudill.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Chris Day.
Yes.
Wally.
Yes.
Yates.
Okay, that passes. Next item is to consider an ordinance changing the parking restrictions along C Avenue East from North 11th Street over to South Park Avenue. That's the first reading. At the, at the meeting on March 21st of 2016, city council directed staff to perform a study regarding the on-street parking restrictions along C Avenue East going from North 11th Street over to Park Avenue. Currently, no parking zone exists on the south side of C Avenue East from North 11th to 400 feet west of South Park Avenue. And we've got a figure that's attached that shows that. The main concern was the visibility of vehicles exiting the hospital driveways due to the parked cars that are along the north side of C Avenue East. As part of the study, survey was mailed to the property owners in the affected area. Of the 16 property owners that responded, 7, 44%, want to leave the parking restriction as it is on the south side only. 6, 38%, want to restrict parking on both sides. 2, 12%, want to restrict the parking on the north side only, and one person, 6%, wants to remove all parking restrictions. According to this survey, a majority of the residents, 94%, 15 owners, wanted some kind of parking restriction, whether it's on the south side, north side, or both sides of C Avenue East. This section of C Avenue East is 31 feet in width. That allows for parking on one side of the street but not on both sides. In addition, current city code restricts parking only 10 feet either side of driveway or intersection approaches, which is not adequate for the visibility of exiting hospital vehicles. In order to alleviate visibility concerns for the existing, or the exiting hospital traffic along the north side of C Avenue East, staff is recommending to restrict parking on the north side only, which is option number one. This option would keep one side of the street available for on-street parking to accommodate the residents living on the south side of C Avenue East. Staff also recommends that the parking be restricted 50 feet on either side of the intersection of North 11th Street for the visibility of waiting vehicles at a two-way stop. Planning and zoning commission, at their meeting on May 9th, voted 6, yes, to 1, no, in favor of a different option. Option 2, listed below in detail, to restrict parking 50 feet on both sides of the eastern most driveway approaches to the hospital, and leave the parking restriction along the south side of C Avenue East. They also recommended a parking restriction 50 feet east and west of North 11th Street on the north side of C Avenue East for two-way stop visibility. And so there's a figure, 1.3, that depicts the details of that, the current parking restrictions and the recommended option. So, staff recommended option number one is to restrict parking along the north side of C Avenue East from 50 foot west of North 11th Street for two-way stop visibility, to 325 feet west of South Park Avenue. In addition, restrict the parking along the south side of C Avenue East from North 11th Street to 50 feet east of North 11th Street for two-way stop visibility. And so we've got figure 2 that shows that. The planning and zoning commission recommended option 2, that's to restrict parking from 540 feet west of South Park Avenue to 340 feet west of, yeah, 340 feet west of South Park Avenue and 50 feet east and west of North 11th Street on the north side of C Avenue East for a two-way stop visibility. So that's in figure 3. So, we are here for a public hearing, and so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would care to speak to this?
Ross, would you mind telling us again what you said for the hospital?
From the hospital's viewpoint, we would prefer, I guess, the planning and zoning option that has restrictions of parking on both sides of the street, especially in front of all of our property on C Avenue.
So it's option 2. That one right there. That's not. It's always figure 2 option 2. Three, option 2. Option 2, what it has?
Mayor, council, if I may, I think what was presented, the planning and zoning, there were a number of options presented. One was a staff recommendation, which you see here, and that includes just a restriction on the north side. There's also a second recommendation to fully restrict parking on both the north and the south side. Then P and Z came up with their own option here. So, when this item was forwarded to you tonight, I had asked staff to remove the restriction on both sides because that wasn't truly the one, I just wanted one staff recommendation, not two. And so we arrived at this one here, which was just restriction on the north side. So, that's where there may be some confusion in the presentation of the item.
So Ross just talked about the one that was removed.
I apologize. I was looking at the figure 2, I was thinking that was option 2 as well. I was looking at the figure two, I was thinking that was option two as well. So we would prefer option one.
So just the north side restriction? So the one that was removed from your packet?
Yeah.
Based on my recommendation, sorry. I thought there were gonna be too many options, and there we go.
Because option one starts to restrict the north but removes the restriction on the south.
Correct. That would be staff recommendation. That was, yes, that's staff recommendation. And then P and Z did this. We did, uh, staff have a third item that we supported, which was restricting up both. I had asked our staff just to have the one recommendation, not the two.
So essentially what this one does is it maintains no parking on the, on the south side, and then it takes that main opening where the ambulance comes in and out and goes fifty feet on either side of it, is that what the deal is?
Correct.
Or the two openings, there's two openings there.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what P and Z did.
And then also adds a little bit over there, option two, figure three.
Yeah.
That's fifty foot on each side, right?
Yes.
That's not current, right, no, that's not current right now.
Current is this.
From our point of view, restricting parking on either side of the street is beneficial because in one way or another, you're going to have people walking across the street trying to get to the hospital, if that's their intent.
Say that again, they're gonna be walking across the street.
Yeah, so if it was switched to no parking on the south side of the street, people would then be parking and then walking towards the hospital, which would still pose a risk for ambulance drivers and people walking across the street.
So like Ross, let me try, so as scanned right now, there's no one that, they cannot park on the south side of the road, so if they park and come to the hospital, they're parking on the north side, and then they go right into the facility. However, we, if the council adopts the restriction on the north side and then cars start parking on the south side, they're gonna cross the street.
So that's your concern.
So then, in essence, MHP is suggesting no parking on both sides.
Correct, for the planning and zoning, at least restricting.
For that.
Correct.
That might have been, yeah.
Clear as day, right?
Yeah.
Why does staff like, I'm gonna call it option one over option two, now that option two has been formulated?
So if you see the survey, ninety-four percent of the residents who responded to the survey wanted some form of a parking restriction. But having said that, there is also residents who prefer to park on one side of the street. If you remove parking on both sides of the streets, those residents will not have room to park on Sea Avenue. It's going to start spilling onto somewhere else on the, on the east or west of the properties. So that's the reason why we are, we as a staff are supporting, to allow parking on one side of the street and restrict parking on one side of the street.
But option two allows parking on one side of the street except for a fairly small area.
Right, but option two, there's other driveway entrances which still continues. I think that is not adequate to give you visibility, or if there's a sharp spot in between those two red spots, I think it may still restrict the visibility and still hinder with the safety of the hospital. If you see, there's other entrances the hospital uses still, which, which will continue to park, be to be parked.
How many accidents have we had out of those other entrances?
None.
We didn't look at accident records.
Do you have that information?
I'll have to check with the police department, and we have some older cards, as far as twenty-twelve records. I don't know whether the police department has more than that or...
We did find out, we can search.
Yeah.
Steve, you were trying to get to the point where it'd be option one, is that what you're looking at?
Well, when I first started, my option's not up there, which is that it had parking on either side of the street. So when I first started chatting with folks, I talked to the hospital first, and true to Ross who's here, that's exactly what, I mean, they said, yes, that'd be great. I talked to Kelly Brooklander on the corner, because she's got a business there. There's currently parking, as you can see, allowed in front of the mansion, clear over to the other house beside it. So there's parking there for them. And Kelly said yes, and true to form, she said in here as well, that she votes for no parking on either side, except down there on the end where they could, to visit their business. So that's, and if you look at every one of those driveways on the south side, I had somebody tell me one time, somebody not there, that, well, they might want to park out in front. Every one of them can park clear behind their house. Every one of them has a driveway. I walk this street every day in the morning, so I get a close-up view. Every one of them has a driveway that goes behind their house, and there's plenty of parking for folks to park off the street, that's not an issue whatsoever. So I'm curious, I do have a question though, Keelish, when you did the survey, how do you decide how far to do the survey for? Because the people that are saying no, at least three of them on here, don't even live on Sea Avenue, they live off on a side street. So I'm trying to figure out how far, because you didn't ask me, and I live across the street, so I guess...
Because you started, you got a big driveway.
Well, okay, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, how far, how far do you go? Because you go, you go clear down South Park to not the corner house, but the one next to it, and on the other side, you go down there on eleven. So I'm just curious, I mean, it's people that don't even live on Sea that said no.
Right, right.
Well, but North Eleven doesn't have any parking, that's why.
Yeah, okay. Well, but North Park, or South Park does.
No, that's why I asked North Eleven people, because they're already told they can't park on their street, so they're trying to find the closest on-street parking spot, how far do they have to go?
Especially if they're...
And North Eleven is much narrower than Sea.
What was that?
I said North Eleven is much narrower than Sea.
So we did, we contacted everyone on Sea Avenue from Eleventh to Park. We contacted everyone on Eleventh from E Avenue to Sea Avenue. We contacted everyone from, on North Park, from Sea Avenue to South Park, near the triangular island. And I think we may have contacted someone on E Avenue too. Now, these are with the concerns that the parking may start spilling. If the parking is restricted on both sides, it may start spilling into their properties. So that's why we contacted them.
Got you. Thank you. I guess I'm a little confused, maybe, I mean, I think we need to find out about the accident record. I mean, Steve, I'm not speaking for you, but you brought it up from a safety consideration, so I don't see why we're affecting all the parking. I mean, if we need to back it up for the ambulance to come in and out of the driveways, I mean, that makes sense, but I don't know why we, if we have to take it any farther than that.
You're saying basically, read it like it is.
And I appreciate that. I mean, we can wait for accidents to happen. I mean, just for whatever it's worth, we had, just, if you wait for things to happen...
I said, we're gonna back it up at the entrance.
I got you.
But basically, you're saying, Tom, if I heard you right, option two.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he is saying.
Which is the one with the little red, no, right there, right there.
Which that protects the ambulance injuries as well as...
Takes care of the safety aspect, as I see it, in my opinion, but obviously you disagree, but I just...
Is this something we're reading? Opportunity?
Speaking of which, I haven't closed the public hearing yet. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak at this point? Okay, now I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. As you were. Okay, any further comments? Is somebody in a position where they want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for oxygen.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Coudry?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Perse?
Yes.
Walling?
Which option?
Two.
Yep.
Gates?
Yes.
Hernette?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on.
We'll get, we'll get the information on the accident.
C, consider resolution approving the site plan for the new Stephen Memorial Animal Shelter located at seventeen sixteen Pella Avenue. The Stephen Animal Shelter Foundation has submitted a site plan for the new animal shelter to be located at seventeen sixteen Pella Avenue. Site in consideration is seven point three-six acres in area. It's presently zoned as GC, which is General Commercial District. Proposed site plan illustrates a six thousand square foot building, public and employee parking lots, water and sewer connections, and stormwater collection and detention improvements. The new building will have a public access from Pella Avenue through the Latter Day Saints Church parking lot and a service access from D Avenue West. The planned land use for this property is pet services, which is permitted in a GC district. Staff has reviewed and approved the site plan with the following stipulations. Number one, that the easements for the form, excuse me, the storm sewer grading improvements along the east side of the property need to be obtained. Number two, if necessary, provide post-construction erosion control measures along the northeast and southwest sloped areas. And number three, to combine and/or replat the parcels associated with the site plan. If necessary, dedicate right-of-way along D Avenue West in order to match the existing right-of-way. Planning and Zoning Commission, at their meeting on June seventh, recommended approval of the site plan with those stipulations in by a vote of seven yes to zero no. And staff is recommending the city council approve the resolution for the proposed Stephen Animal, Stephen Memorial Animal Shelter site plan with the above-mentioned stipulations. Do we have a motion supporting that? Second. Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm just curious, and Mike tried to answer my question while he was talking, but when I went out and drove this, it was interesting, I didn't realize that there was a road there. I don't know if that's a road, or that's part of the church parking lot, but it goes on past and it's deadheaded. So I'm not, who owns that road?
I thought that was it.
On the north side, correct, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Where the parking basically is for the slumber basin?
And you thought it was private?
Built by the church.
Yeah, okay.
It was my understanding, though, there was an easement from the beginning for development, and that easement's already in place to allow this, that's what I was understanding. That makes more sense.
Neither staff have received the easement agreement between the church and the...
I thought that was the case, thank you.
Makes more sense, nobody would have done that if there wasn't a reason.
Any other comments?
I got one more. Mike, on the signage, the signs, um... Yeah, that, that's...
Do we want that to meet our same wayfinding system, or color and whatnot?
Uh, I don't know about color, I mean, indicating that, I could see maybe asking for a monument sign rather than stick post sign. I don't know that we necessarily indicated color. But certainly in the book, the council has had more, more of an ability to persuade the owner.
Well, if it was a city facility, it would have the city look, wouldn't it? But this isn't really a city facility.
And I would say, right now, we don't really have to uniformly, per se, for certain facilities, but we would like to have basically...
And I like the monument idea.
Any other comments? Well, we've got a motion and a second. I assume supporting the stipulations as stated by planning and zoning. Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Perse?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Hernette?
Yes.
Coudry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Gets us to the end of the regular agenda. Reports from city staff, city manager.
Mayor, Council, we just have one update from fire chief on the fire station construction project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We decided that it'd be a opportune time to kind of bring everybody up to speed, since there has been some construction going on over the past couple of months with the fire station. So we'll go backwards just a little bit, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but just kind of bring everybody's memory back into where we started at. In the fall of two thousand and eleven, the water department, former water department building, was deemed unsafe by structural engineers. At that point, we moved the fire station equipment that was stored over there into the existing facility, which created, whoops, jumping on me, which created some close quarters for us. February two thousand and twelve, we began conversations with city council about the overcrowding conditions and what some options might be for adding a station, adding some bays on whatever the council chose to do at that time. So these are just some of the close quarter photos that we showed in there. So during the spring and summer of two thousand and twelve, we, council gave staff direction to go out and start speaking with some other communities that had recently built fire stations, done some renovation projects. From that, city manager, myself interviewed some prospective architectural firms. At that point, from this, from those interviews, we brought that information back to council. Warbach Associates was selected to begin conceptual drawings of the station. So January two thirteen, we brought back some conceptual designs from Warbach, three different options. And through those discussions, there were questions arose about the project cost, if the city should actually be looking at something off-site. We went back, talked through those things, brought back more plans. Then we were directed to gather some community input. We had several meetings with, with community members, council members. The result of those meetings came back, they, the city wanted to keep that in the downtown district. That was in the winter and fall. So summer, fall of two thousand, and winter two thousand and thirteen, we started talking about project costs, design features, different funding sources. In February, January, February of two thousand and fourteen, placed on the November ballot a referendum for the general obligations bond. That bond passed with a three-point-one million dollar price tag on it. In November of fourteen, again, that, that ballot language passed, we entered into a contract with Warbach for, to finish construction design. September of fifteen was our first bid letting. Those bid letting plans come in high, approximately twenty-five percent high. Subsequently, council rejected those bids, went back to the drawing board again to redesign the, the station. So from October to December, we redesigned the plans, second bid letting, early January of sixteen. Those bids came in, DDVI was awarded the low bid. So here's, here's kind of what we wanted to get to after that brief review. This was, work actually started in March. This is sandstone coming in, they're starting to remove the parking lot surface. This is the over excavation that had to occur because of substandard soils that were out in that lot. So about two and a half feet was... So about two and a half feet was dug out of that lot, hauled off, and then rock was brought back in to meet good compaction. You'll notice throughout most of these, you're going to see power lines and things like this. These were some other utility concerns that we had to deal with. This is as the gravel was starting to be brought back in, they brought it in and layered it out and then compacted it. The pole that you see are the existing light pole that was in the, in the parking lot at the time. We had to wait for that one because it actually fed some other streetlights. They had to do some rerouting on that, and then America did. Again, this is just more compassion. I clipped this picture in because this was the storm sewer, some of the storm sewer stuff that was laid out. A lot of the cost of this project goes into things that you may not see. There, it's underground work that's being done and once the building's on top of it, you never see it again. But there was a lot of infrastructure that had to be put in. More of the storm sewer connections that was also placed in front of the station. This is the current view of our existing, looking out of our existing apparatus bays. This was taken as they were putting in the new storm sewer and sanitary sewer pictures. This is a view looking to the northwest after the grade work had been done, the sanitary and storm sewers had been put in. The storm plows there is what we run into there at the end of April that got us some wet conditions where we had a little problem getting compaction tests to pass. That's, since been corrected, but that's what kind of held up our apron getting placed back in in a timely manner. Here you're going to see, again, this is looking in the northwest, these are, the footings have already been poured, stem walls are put in, the block, concrete block, cinder block goes on top of these stem walls. Some unforeseen problems that we run into as the footings and stem walls are being put in was, we found out that where we thought the storm sewer or the sanitary sewer ran from the existing building, it didn't run where we thought it did. They run into it on the outside in the alley. So what this photo is, is we had to cut a trench into the existing apparatus bay and lay in new sanitary sewer lines and storm sewer connections. The, we opted just to refill these with gravel at this time because it's like we didn't want to put concrete in it till we figured out what, there may be something else come up. So we opted just to pack that with gravel. It's working fine for us for, for the time being. Again, this is just more stem walls that are poured, this would be looking to the southwest These were taken Saturday. These photos are taken Saturday. We're actually up on the third floor of the band room. What you're looking down on now is the elevator shaft and the stairwell that would be coming, that will be coming up to all three levels. And then we're going to pan out a little bit. This will be looking to the northwest. As you can see, in the top corner there, that opening up there is actually the footing for the maintenance pit, the service pit. Stem walls are formed up today, they're, they're due to pour them tomorrow. Then the next photo you're going to see is the L-shaped portion, which is, you'll see the plumbing there for the restroom facilities as well as the office area, those stem pipes are coming up. And then the, the three storage room bays along First Avenue. So what's next? This week, plans are to have a mason on site. They'll be laying the first cord of cinder block along that L-shaped. That will get them prepped for next week of pouring the floor in that L-shaped area. Also, they're doing grading work out front. We're hoping to have concrete back in front of the apparatus bays by the end of this week. So that will let us move back in with the exception of the westmost bay door. We're going to leave that gravel for the time being because the new fire truck won't fit in. We're lacking about two inches of being able to get that in. By leaving it gravel, we can change the grade and get it to where we can get that in the, in the building. So where are we today? The start date was March 28th. The total contracted working days were 440. We've used a total of 60 days thus far. Gives us a total of about 379 days left in the contract. When you factor out the holidays, things like this, we, we end up with a projected completion date of about August 1st for the total project. Anybody got any questions?
Especially remember, you mentioned three bays. Is one of the options the fourth bay?
Yeah, the fourth bay is in, yes.
So we are doing the fourth bay?
Yes. The three options was when, when we were originally back on the conceptual designs. There was, and I don't remember what three options, there was a single bay and a double bay and.
Why don't you go back and show me? It'd be the, the one with, would look like a box.
Yes, it would be this, this is actually, where the maintenance pit is, that's the fourth bay.
Well, we are, I just wanted.
Yes, that is correct. That is the fourth bay.
Right, thank you.
Yes. So you've got one bay there and then the next two, you can't really see them right now because they've got them covered with gravel because they're, they're doing some grading. If we go back one more, maybe. Now, the, the long bay there where you see the short stem wall, that's, that's, that would be bay number one, where it was programmed for the area. And the other two, you just can't see them because they've got them covered with gravel. That's all I have.
So, so far, would you, would you estimate the wrong time?
I asked that very question Friday. We've been having construction meetings about every two weeks. They feel like they're right on cue. Out of that meeting that we had last Friday, they're still saying that they'd like to have a roof on it by October over the new portion of it. Again, weather can change things, but the, the thing that's really going to be kind of amazing here, I think, over the next couple of months, is there was so much underground work that had to be done. Now all that's done and you're going to see the walls come up pretty quick and then a roof come on it. And then it's probably going to, it's like everything, it's going to slow down again because then you get unfinished work on the inside. So it's like any typical construction project, you, the long time getting anything started underground and then it just kind of blossoms up and everybody thinks, wow, it's about done. And then it tends to slow down again when you get into finished work on the inside.
Is there an incentive for them to finish on time?
Pardon?
Is there an incentive for them to finish on time?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, oh, I've lost my terminology here. There's a, if they don't, there's a penalty if they don't get it finished on time. I apologize, I've lost my train of thought. Liquidated damages, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else? City major? City clerk, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, city attorney?
Yeah, they thank you.
Okay, and thank you again for the, the comments beforehand. Joe? Anything from city council members? Okay?
No, thank you.
Nothing, sir.
Tom?
No.
Okay. Well, we had great momentum to get this meeting done with. I'll go ahead and slow it down. The, in the various correspondence I was looking through, I noticed that we had a letter from Senator Charles Grassley dated June 10th, you know, saying, "Congratulations on being awarded Tree City USA recognition for 2015. Salute you and your commitment to establishing a healthy community for us. These forests are integral to air and water quality as well as energy conservation in your community. So as your U.S. Senator, I'm pleased to send my best wishes on this extraordinary occasion. On behalf of all Iowans, I commend you on a job well done. All the best to you and again, congratulations, sincerely Chuck Grassley, United States Senator." So anyway, wanted the council to be aware that stuff we do gets noticed every now and then. I've got nothing further. Do we have a motion for adjournment? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.